So with that, I would like to welcome up the Chair of the Board of Water Supply, Brian Andia.
Aloha, everyone. It's really great to see all of you here tonight. Thank you very much for coming. I wanted to, I'm here on behalf of the Board. There's five of us volunteer members serving on the Board along with two ex officio members. But I just wanted to be here personally tonight to hear your thoughts, hear the questions, talk to you personally, and assure you all that this is a high priority for the Board. We really care about what you feel as a community, what you feel as individuals. And so I'm here personally tonight to listen. And so I'm really proud of what the Board has done so far. And, you know, we're just all ears. Water is life, and I am so proud as a Board member to be part of this process. Thank you. Speaking of the Board, I'd like to introduce our hardworking manager and chief engineer, Ernie Lau, who's the expert in all of this.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Can you hear me okay? I'm kind of a little bit soft spoken here. My name's Ernie. I'm the managing chief engineer. You see some of the BWS staff in green shirts around the room. I also brought our leadership team here. So if you have any questions in different areas, they'll be available to help answer the question. Just want to thank you all for coming tonight. This is very important, and the Board has really made it clear they want to seek your input into this process, into this draft rate proposal. Kauaiola, water for life. That is our vision. All life depends on water.
Ernie, can I get you to hold your mic just a little closer? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Sorry about that. I'll tell you, I'm not too comfortable with microphones. So for the Board of Water Supply, our mission is really to provide safe, dependable, and affordable water right up to your tap in your homes every minute of every hour and day, so you can depend upon us. What does it take to get that water? Have you ever wondered what it takes to get that water? When you turn on the faucet, the water flows. Well, this little infographic here kind of tells us the story. It really requires a large and complex water system. It starts up Maoka on the mountains, and you have the beautiful Ko'olae's here with the rain that falls on our Ko'olae's. That is very important to our water supply because our fresh water originates as rainfall falling on the water sheds. We have 13 tunnels in our system. These are tunnels that are dug into the mountain, into the lava rock. And when they hit water, water just flows freely by gravity, no need to pump. And you're very blessed on the windward side here with some of our larger water tunnels in our system. Our Wahe'ee Tunnel in the back of Wahe'ee Valley, probably our largest tunnel source. Luluku and Haiku tunnels also provide gravity-fed water to your community. We also take our water, and all of our water is groundwater. So we have five shafts that are dug down into the rock and go underground, and they skim water off the top of the water lens or the aquifer. Our biggest being Halava Shaft that was built in the 1940s. We also have wells all over the island in different locations, from Makaha all the way to east Honolulu into the Palolo area, into Aina Haina area, Kule Oo. And we also have wells as far as Kohuku, the North Shore. Our water system is around the whole island. 194 groundwater wells and source pumps. We also, and those flow through especially in the central Oahu area, not here, but in central Oahu. We have issues with pesticide or chemical contamination of our groundwater supply. So we have to pass them through large amounts of carbon or like a big charcoal filter to filter out the pesticide and make the water safe for our community to drink. So that's mainly in the central Oahu area and in the Waipahu area. Water then also flows to water tanks around the island. We have 171 water tanks around the island. These are concrete tanks completely covered, so it keeps the water safe. But they provide storage for peak demands in our community and also helping to meet fire flow requirements, so that there is always going to be water available to fight fires. But because our community lives not only in the coastal areas at one elevation above sea level, there is a community that lives up in the mountains, and you have some here in the back of Haiku in different parts of the island. We also have booster pumps that pump water from where the water sources are, the wells or the shafts and tunnels, and maybe pump it to the higher elevations where our community lives, to the tanks at higher elevations. All connected by 2,100 miles of pipeline, water mains in the system. Okay, thanks, Dave. That 2,100 miles of pipeline, the average age is between 40 to 50 years old right now. We even have pipe that's approaching 100 years old in our system. In addition, there's 21,000 fire hydrants around in your community, and they're there for the fire department to use to fight fires, to keep you folks safe and to protect your property. It all flows out to 170,000 customers in our water system. These are customer accounts, 170,000 customers. In total, on average, we provide 145 million gallons of high-quality drinking water to our community every day, serving almost a million people islandwide. So that's our water system. It's a pretty massive infrastructure. And because we have people living all over the island, which we serve most of the island, the water system is spread out and pretty extensive. The question we asked us as we went through four years of extensive planning and evaluating the condition of our water system was this question. Are we prepared to provide safe, dependable, and affordable water for the next generation? Because water is for life, and as long as there are people on this island, we need to ensure that this water supply is available and dependable for our community. So we did, developed a water master plan, a 30-year look ahead to provide that roadmap for us, where we need to go and what we need to do to our water, care for our water system. It looked at the entire water system. It identified the necessary improvements over the next 30 years. It also, because I didn't make this point earlier, but Board of Water Supply is financially self-sufficient. We do not get any property tax revenue, any other revenue sources from the state or county government. We have to be able to pay for the operation of this large, complicated water system, but also for the necessary improvements by basically people paying their water bills. I have to pay my water bill, and that money goes to pay for operations and also the maintenance of the infrastructure. So we balance the needs of the infrastructure and system by trying to keep rates affordable for our customers. And it is a delicate balance, like a seesaw, that we have to balance between the two. Next, please. Some of the findings of the water master plan, that we need new drinking water supplies mainly for the Eva, Wainai, and Honolulu area. And this is actually a view, if you come down to Halava Shaft, and we are actually offering tours of Halava Shaft, just please call our communications office, and we can arrange to take you down 145 feet underground to see the top of the water lens there in the Halava area. And that's a view of that pure drinking water there. We also find that pumps, which are like the heart of your heart, and the pipes think of it as your circulatory system, that we need to care for those. And we need additional pump capacity in the system to provide greater resiliency to handle emergencies and peak demands. Next, please. But our pipes are suffering main breaks, and I know you've probably heard about recent main breaks around the island. Some of our larger pipes, the more recent one is like 20-inch diameter trans cast iron pipe on Doel Street, 24-inch PVC pipeline break out near Nanakuli, 16-inch main break in the Pearl City area on Kumomai Drive. These pipes are all suffering from problems with deterioration from age, corrosion, and soil conditions, and also pressure issues. So we average right now about 300-plus main breaks a year in our water system on that 2,100 miles of pipeline. Another finding of the water master plan, which is a testament to all of you, all of you, our customers, is that through water conservation since the 90s, the per-person usage per day has dropped by about 30 gallons a day per person. And that equates to saving about 12 million gallons a day in our water system. So thank you for all your efforts toward water conservation. But we still need to do more. And the master plan identified that we need to push the per-person usage down in the next 20 years by another 12 gallons less per day per person. Next, please. Another finding is that we expect rainfall to decrease, especially in the west Oahu area, and that the intensity of storms may increase over time. And the issue here, in spite of what maybe some have expressed about the issue of climate change, I just let you know that from my perspective, climate change is very real. We need to look at that and prepare for it. And we just seen recently the extreme rainfall events in east Honolulu and Waimeanalo, and also on Kauai in North Shore, Wa'neha-Haina area, 50 inches in 24 hours, a national record in rainfall. That, and I don't know if you remember, in 2015, 15 tropical cyclones came across the Pacific, and fortunately, most of them missed Hawaii. So part of this effort, we need to look at diversification of our water supply to make us more resistant, more resilient to the effects of climate change. Next, please. Healthy watersheds are really the sponge of Maoka that helps to capture the rainfall and helps to allow that rainfall to percolate through the lava rock into the underground aquifers. So caring for our watersheds is very important, and water conservation. Next, please. The plan identified through the infrastructure investment plan, and there's a summary in the back table there, that over the next 30 years, we're going to have to invest in about 800-plus projects in our water system islandwide with a total cost of about $5.3 billion in today's dollars. Next, please. And in the next 10 years, looking a little more closely, that first category of reliability and resiliency, to increase that in our water system with a focus on improvements to our pumps, our water tanks, and our treatment systems. The biggest component here is going to be pipes. And to bring the number of main breaks down over time, we're looking at an investment of about $876 million. And on the last two bullets, they're water conservation extremely important. It's cheaper to actually encourage people to save water and use water wisely than we can defer possibly development of new wells. And that's a better way to try to preserve our water resources over the long term. Caring for our watersheds, our source of supply, capturing the rain, the ua that falls Maoka on our watersheds is very important, too. And we need to invest more on an annual basis in those areas. Some of the challenges facing us and the issues main breaks, and the Board has made it very clear to us, they want to do something about trying to bring the number of main breaks each year down to a lower number while still balancing affordability for our customers. So the diamonds here, yellow diamonds, represent the actual experience per year on an annual basis. So you saw in 2010, it went as high as 400 main breaks a year. It came down for a brief time, for a number of years around 2014, 2015, where it actually dropped below 300 main breaks a year. And we thought, well, should we celebrate that? And we said, well, maybe we should wait and see a few years to see if that trend continues. Unfortunately, the main breaks started to creep back up, and last year, we hit 350 main breaks a year. Right now, we're replacing that pipeline at a rate of about six miles a year. So if we continue to replace pipeline only at six miles a year, remember, we have 2,100 miles of pipeline in the system, then what we're projecting through our studies, that the blue line will be the experience in terms of main breaks, that that number of main breaks will start to continue to climb to a very high number. However, if we go and annually replace within the next 10 years, get us to a... I'll let the ambulance pass. If we can, in the next 10 years, ramp up the replacement of pipelines to, remember, we're six miles right now a year, get it up to 21 miles a year? That is only, that's only 1% of our 2,100 miles. Then the orange line is what you see here is in terms of what we are projecting to be our experience in main breaks, that it'll continue to go up. The ramping up to 21 miles will take about 10 years to occur. But over time, and it won't happen overnight, you'll see the trend in main breaks coming down to be below 300 main breaks a year. So the Board felt under that replacement scenario, that's where we want to head. So the rates are kind of designed to provide the revenue we need to actually start implementing the first five years of this approach. Next, please. So at this point, I just talked a little bit about our long-term planning, our needs in our infrastructure, the complexity and size of our infrastructure to get water to your homes every day, every hour, every minute. But really, it's again, because we're financially self-sufficient, it's issue, the issue is how do we afford this? How do we pay for this through our water rates and charges? So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Ebersold. CDM Smith has been working hard to help us do the master planning effort and also to develop the water rates proposals that you're going to see tonight. So please provide your input, your manao, monao, and the Board, and our Board Chair is here to hear your position, your concerns, or feelings about the rate proposal. Thank you.
Okay, so just as a reminder, what we're talking about tonight are water rates. Now, when you get a water bill, you probably see there's a water component of it, and there's a sewer component of it. And the reason for that is that the Board of Water Supply serves as a, basically a billing service for the wastewater agency, for the Department of Environmental Services. But Board of Water Supply doesn't do anything to control, they don't have any influence over those sewer rates. So again, we're just talking about the water portion of your bill tonight. So rates are being proposed for a five-year period, bless you, beginning in July 2018 through July 2022. Now, under that scenario, there would be no increases until July of 2019, over a year from now. Those increases are expected to generate about $60 million a year of additional revenue over that time period. And that money gets used to make the kinds of investments that Ernie was explaining just before this. So what is the Board of Water Supply committed to do with these new rates? I'm going to go through these points and then talk about each of them in a little more detail. The first one is to raise rates gradually, right? It's tough when all of a sudden you're paying this amount this month, and then suddenly it jumps hugely. So raise rates gradually is a very important commitment here. Another thing the Board is committed to do is to provide an essential needs tier that not only assists with affordability of water, but also rewards conservation. The next one is to encourage and reward conservation by offering lower rates in the lower tiers and charging higher rates in the higher tiers, to send a price signal that helps customers make decisions about how they use water. Another is to address the subsidy that single-family residential customers currently receive, and I'll talk more about this, and it's largely paid for by multi-unit residential customers. And that really reflects this concept of everyone paying their fair share. So I mentioned the essential needs tier. What this is, is a below-cost rate for the first 2,000 gallons of water usage per month for residential customers. All residential customers get this rate for their first 2,000 gallons of usage each month. And actually, about 10% of the BWS's bills that they issue, those bills are for 2,000 gallons a month or less. Back at the end of last year, the Board of Water Supply did a web-based customer survey on a number of issues related to water rates. Over 1,000 people responded to that survey, and over half of those respondents indicated that they would, they showed pretty strong support for a new tier with very low rates to ensure affordability and reward conservation. Now, I mentioned sending a price signal about conservation and doing things to help customers make choices about it and reward those who are using less. So the next part is to adjust the tiers in the water rate structure to help financially motivate additional water conservation. Ernie explained the importance of continued conservation going forward. Now, your water bill, if you've looked at it closely, it contains two parts. There's a fixed charge or a monthly billing charge that you currently pay, and there's also a usage charge based on how much water you use. So currently, the monthly billing charge is $9.26 a month, shown in that current column, the light green one there. And all customers pay that each month regardless of the size of their water meter. The reality, though, is that the cost of, you know, if the cost to go read a water meter to send out a bill is the same regardless of your meter size, but there's a lot of other costs associated with monitoring account and taking care of a meter that vary by the meter size. It costs a lot more money to maintain and replace larger meters than it does smaller ones. So what's being proposed now is to vary this monthly charge and calling it a customer charge and to have it vary by meter size, so that those customers who have the larger meters are paying their share of the cost to maintain and replace those meters. Now, most of you, I believe, are probably single-family residential customers, and the good news in this for you is you all have probably 5/8ths or 3/4 inches meters, the smallest meters that the Board of Water Supply has. And so you'll benefit from the lowest customer charge that the Board offers, currently $9.26 per month, and raising to just over $12 per month in 2022. Next, let's talk about what the existing, so that was the fixed part of your bill, the monthly charge that doesn't change. Now, we're going to talk about the part that's the usage charge based on how much water you use. Currently, in the blue columns, you see the existing rate structure. So the first tier of water that you use, 0 to 13,000 gallons per month, you currently pay $4.42 per 1,000 gallons for that water. For the water that you use that's over 13,000 gallons a month, so from 13,001 up to 30,000 gallons per month, you pay $5.33 per 1,000 gallons for that. And if you happen to be among the Board of Water Supply's best customers, the top 3% of customers, using more than 30,000 gallons a month, you're paying $7.94 per 1,000 gallons. So I mentioned the essential needs tier. So here's how it'll change, the things in the purple, or here's how it's being proposed to change. The first 2,000 gallons of usage that you use would be charged at $3.79 per 1,000 gallons, and then it would rise through July 22 up to $4.46 per 1,000 gallons. For the next increment of water that you might use, from 2,001 gallons up to 6,000, that would be charged at $4.46 per 1,000 gallons, rising to $5.25 per 1,000 in July of 2022. Well, then, we move into the next tier, usage above 6,000 gallons a month. And why did we set the tier there? And the reason is that about half of the bills that the Board of Water Supply issues are for 6,000 gallons a month or less. So about half the customers are using 6,000 gallons a month or less, seemed a pretty logical place to kind of make that break. So moving upward then from 6,001 gallons up to 30,000 gallons a month for that amount of usage, customers would pay $5.06 per 1,000 gallons, rising to $5.85 per 1,000. And then for the top percent, the top amount of usage, more than 30,000 gallons a month, that increment of water would be charged the highest rate, $8.46 per 1,000, rising to $9.25 per 1,000. All that's a lot of information. I think what most people probably care about is what does this mean for my water bill? So let's look at the combined water bill, including the customer charge and the usage charge. And here, we're looking at the bill for the lowest water user, someone using 2,000 gallons a month. They're currently paying $18.10 per month for their water. That would stay the same in July of 2018. It would drop by about a dime in July 2019, and then rise into just over $21 in July of 2022. For the median water user, those, these are, half of Board of Water Supply's customers use 6,000 gallons a month or less. These customers are currently paying 35, just over $35 a month for their water. That would rise slightly in July of 2019 to $35.84, and then continue to rise, and in July 2022, it would be just over $42 per month. For the average water user, these are customers using 9,000 gallons a month. Their bill is just over $49 a month right now, and that would rise gradually over the period by about $10 a month. And for the highest water users, here's a sample bill of somebody using 35,000 gallons of water per month. They're currently paying just under $200 a month for that water. And that amount would rise over the period, so that in July of 2022, it would be just under $230 per month. Now, for multi-unit residential customers, these are customers that live in, where there's three or more units in a complex or a development, so apartments, townhomes, condominiums. These rates are structured based on the amount of use per dwelling unit or per household. And it's a structure of tier-based rates, much like what you saw in single-family residential. So again, the essential needs tier is for the first 2,000 gallons of water use per month per dwelling unit, and that rate is at $3.70 per 1,000 gallons, rising to $3.77 in July of 2022. You see similar increases for the next tier, which is 2,001 gallons to 4,000 gallons per month. Now, you'll notice that that tier wasn't as big as it was in single-family residential. In single-family residential, it was at 6,000. This tier tops out at 4,000. And the reason these tiers are set lower is because multi-unit residential customers don't have the outdoor irrigation usage that single-family residential has. So the tiers are shifted a bit lower. The next tier is from 4,001 gallons to 10,000 per month. That starts at $4.95 per 1,000, rising to just over $5 per 1,000 gallons per month. And then for usage that's more than 10,000 gallons per month per dwelling unit, that starts at $5.90 per 1,000, rising to $5.98 per 1,000. Now, looking at those numbers, one of the things you probably noticed is that these increases are a lot lower than what you saw the increases in single-family residential. And the reason for that is that single-family residential customers, when you aggregate them all together, they don't pay the full cost that it takes to serve water to their homes. And that additional money is coming largely from multi-unit residential customers, who are paying more than the cost to serve them. So the Board provided guidance to try and move single-family residential closer to the cost of service and bring multi-unit residential customers down to the cost of service. So the rates that you're seeing proposed here take single-family residential customers from about 88% of their cost of service up to 95%, and it brings multi-unit residential from about 108% down to 100% of cost of service. So that's why these changes aren't so extreme for multi-unit residential. For non-residential water rates, these customers are currently paying $4.96 per 1,000 gallons regardless of how much they use. Now, why is that? Why don't we have tiered rates for non-residential customers? Well, these are hotels, restaurants, government entities, shopping centers, hospitals, retail, and they all use different amounts of water, and they use water very differently from each other. So it's very difficult to... So it's very difficult to implement a tiered rate structure that's fair and equitable for all those different types of businesses and different types of water usage. So it's common for utilities to charge a uniform rate like this for their non-residential customers. Currently, it's $4.96 per 1,000 gallons, and that's proposed to rise to $5.27 per 1,000 gallons in July of 2022. This is another customer, group of customers, that's paying more than it costs to serve them. And that extra money, that amount that they're paying more than their cost of service goes to support additional subsidies like lower water rates for agricultural customers and lower rates for recycled water customers. Now, why is that? Reduced rates for agricultural customers have been in place for about 50 years, and the purpose of it is to encourage on-island agricultural production to make the availability of fresh local produce possible. And it's been reflected, been very clear from customers that that's an important community value, and also clear input from the Board of Water Supply's Stakeholder Advisory Group that I'll talk a little bit more about in a second. Now, there is recycled water. Now, recycled water is actually recycled wastewater, and a lot of it, most of it on the island, is discharged in the ocean. But it doesn't have to be. It can be reused. It's perfectly suitable for irrigation, for certain industrial uses, but there's additional costs that those customers have to use that water. And so Board of Water Supply offers it at a discounted rate to encourage people who can use that water. These are largely golf courses and industrial uses in the Evaplane, to encourage them to use that water and preserve higher-quality drinking water sources for everyone else's use. There are also some proposed fee waivers. These are waivers of what's called the Water System Facilities Charge. This is a one-time charge that customers pay when they initially connect to the water system. So if you were building a new house, the first time it connected to the water system, you'd be paying this charge for your share of the capacity in that system. These charges are being proposed for some waivers for, to encourage affordable housing, to encourage the construction of more homeless housing, and to help ease the financial burden of retrofitting older buildings that don't currently have fire sprinklers. Other charges, if you take a look at the fine print on the Board of Water Supply's website, you may see some other charges. There are some proposed changes to these. One of them is a fire meter standby charge. Again, if you're a single-family residential customer, this isn't one that affects you, but if you live in multi-unit housing or you have a large commercial business, you may have a fire meter, a separate fire meter, and that meter needs to be able to serve water 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I had to remember how many days are in a week. Seven days a week, 365 days a year. You need that water available anytime at a second's notice if there's a fire. So currently, the Board of Water Supply pays, has a charge for incidental usage of that water. It's proposed to switch that to a monthly charge, a standby charge. The details of that are on the stations and in the handouts. There's also some isolated water systems that have an emergency interconnection with the Board of Water Supply that are subject to an emergency interconnection charge. I already talked about the water system facilities charge. And then in the event that there's costs for things like power or environmental regulations that rise more rapidly in a given year than what the Board of Water Supply anticipated, there's a cost adjustment mechanism that's available to them to raise the price of water by a penny per 1,000 gallons, and then they need to reconcile that the next year. Those fees haven't been used in quite some time, but they are in the rate structure nonetheless. Again, the details of those things are in the handouts and on the Board of Water Supply's website. So where are we in the process? Ernie mentioned the Water Master Plan, and starting back in 2013, the board started developing a Water Master Plan, which he explained as a long-term view of the needs in the water system. That then resulted in an infrastructure investment plan that describes the specific projects needed to accomplish the goals of the Water Master Plan, and then a long-range financial plan that describes how to pay for those. Summaries of all those plans are available here tonight. They're also available on the Board of Water Supply's website, and I'd encourage you to take a look at those things. All of that's been developed with input from the Board of Water Supply's Stakeholder Advisory Group. This is a group of about 25 individuals from around the island, throughout the community. A couple Stakeholder Advisory Group members are here tonight. I'd like to recognize them. Cruz Vena, thank you. John Rapun, thank you so much, and thanks for being here. They've been volunteering their time and effort over the past three years to provide input to the development of these plans. Board of Water Supply has also conducted customer surveys, focus groups, and received guidance from its board. Then, starting in January, went through a process of evaluating a number of different options for changes to water rates and evaluating the potential impacts of those changes to customers. Through that iterative process, then, in March, they went to their board and said, "We think we're ready, board, for you to take a look at this and determine if it makes sense, if it's ready to go out and seek public input." And so that's the process that we're in right now. So that's been, that started at the end of March and is continuing through June. And with your input, then, it's expected to go back to BWS's board in July and ask the question, based on the input, does this rate package look good? Are there some changes that are needed to it? And get direction from the board or have the board adopt it. That's where the process is. You're at one of these public hearings tonight. There have been, this is the third one, and there's another one in Mililani on May 24. So we started at the end of April in Honolulu. We were in Kapale last night. Really pleased to be here tonight to get your input. If you don't want to provide input tonight, there are other ways to do it, and certainly ways for your friends and family and neighbors to do it, even though they're not here tonight. First is by mail. You can mail in that information. You can submit information on the Board of Water Supply's website, send emails, even make a phone call. So your input is important and encouraged. And now, what we're going to do is open it up to question and answer, and we'll come around with microphones for you. And just wanted to remind you, so what we're doing is want to be able to answer your questions that you have about information that you saw in the presentation. After that, we'll have the opportunity for public testimony, and I'll let you know when we switch into that. Okay? So who's got any questions about things that you saw? It's no time to be shy. This is a great opportunity. You've got the manager, the chair of the board. Yeah.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion about separating the water and sewer bills?
The manager loves that question.
That's a great question. But before I answer the question, I'd like to also introduce a former Water Board member, Mahalani Saifar, from your community here on the Windridge side, and also a former BWS employee for many, many years. So as you noticed, we had a specific slide that said environmental services on one side, the water bill, BWS on the other side of the bill. And if you, most of you homeowners, if you look at your total bill, the water bill component's usually a smaller component, maybe sometimes two times, three times smaller than the sewer component. So we have asked them about the idea of separating the bills. At this point, you know, the decision to bring the bills together many, many years ago, over 30 years ago, was done on the basis of efficiency, saving postage and other things. But I think as the combined bill gets larger, back in 2013, we actually went to, from bimonthy bill to monthly bill, and the purpose was because the bill was getting larger on a bimonthy bill. But bill every two months, the total water and sewer bill is becoming really large because on the sewer side, you're probably aware that they have an EPA consent decree that they have to make improvements to the sewer system and sewage treatment plants on a certain schedule, have quite expensive situation. So their rates have gone up quite significantly. Unfortunately, right now, there's concerns about efficiency, although I know we have the board chair here, but I don't want to put him on the spot. We are hopeful that someday, maybe we can at least separate the bills. Because my concern there is, we're trying to encourage people to save water, but if you save on the water side, the sewer side is still two or three times larger, so you don't see a significant change in your bill because of conservation. So that signal gets kind of masked. So hopefully someday, be glad for you to speak to other folks in the council or the county about this. Are you for separating the bill, ma'am?
Yeah. Okay. Is this on? Yeah. Yeah, I guess I don't know anybody that calls it the water and sewer bill. Everybody calls it the water bill, which is very misleading. And, you know, you're talking about a lot of important changes that have to happen, but, and the relative increase really is not that big when you think about the water and sewer combined. And so I think that's going to be hard for the public to grasp.
It's a little confusing, and in our customer surveys and focus groups, that point has been proven out time and time again. So Board of Water Supply, a portion of the bill is maybe a third or quarter of the total bill, but we have to handle the kukai that we get from customers upset about the total bill being so much.
Great question.
Good question. Thank you for bringing that up.
Right up front here.
Well, you guys say you guys are replacing water lines six miles per year. Can you get into how, are you guys replacing as the water mains breaks, or are you guys putting new pipes in the ground, or how are you going about it?
We're basically replacing the old pipe with a brand-new pipe.
No, but we, we have the water main break, but are you?
Kiana.
Or, sorry.
Are you doing as the water mains breaks, then replacing the pipes? Or you, do you have a plan where you guys are replacing the pipes before they break?
That is the plan, actually, to actually get ahead of the game eventually. I'd like to ask Barry Usagawa here. He's the head of our Water Resources Division. He is my project manager for our Water Master Plan project. We went through an extensive evaluation process of all 12, 2,100 miles, and we scored every segment of pipe in the system to try to determine how we should replace and what order. But Barry, maybe you can explain in more detail. Thank you.
As part of the Water Master Plan, we did an extensive evaluation of all the entire...
Barry, can you put the mic closer to your mouth?
Water system. I shouldn't know how to do this. I sing karaoke. But yeah, we did a comprehensive water system analysis. And then what we did was, we tried to do some forensic on why water mains break. So the slide before was age, soils, and corrosion, and pressure are the primary causes of main breaks. And then we did a, or CDM did, a prioritization of those pipes, segment by segment, and we evaluated them by risk. So risk is the consequence of failure times the likelihood of failure. The likelihood is basically main break history. So if a water main breaks a lot, we have that data. Eventually, we can't just keep fixing the main break. It's time to replace it. If the main is serving a high-consequence customer, like a hospital, we don't want too many disruptions of service there because we really could affect the public health. And so when you multiply them together, you get a risk score, and so now we know all the high-risk pipes in our system. In one slide in the Stakeholder Advisory Group, they said, "If we could replace 200 miles of the highest-risk pipe, we could, at one time, which is impossible, but 200 miles, we could reduce the amount of main breaks by half." So we know which pipes are the high-priority pipes that we need to replace. It just takes us time to actually do that, and construction costs have been rising, permitting, archaeological, it's a big challenge, so. But the plan was, the first step was to determine and identify which of those pipes need to be replaced first. Then it's the rate structure to provide the funding. And then the third piece is ensuring that our internal capacity to implement, put out those construction projects, that we can ramp up. And that's why we're giving ourselves 10 years to get to 21 miles. So it's all, we never had this before. If the mains broke, eventually, we end up replacing it. But now we have a system, pretty definitive, and I think, new to the entire nation, I guess, we have a main break model that tells us that if we do not replace these mains, main breaks will increase. But if we do replace them, main breaks will decrease. It's based on our own historical data. So it's just a matter of us getting to it.
Great question. Other questions? Yeah, we'll get you a microphone.
I have an issue with, my issue is with the billing. I conserve a lot of water.
Could you hold it a little bit closer so we can...
I have a rain gauge catchment system, which I've had for over 10 years, and I never have to pay city water on my irrigation because I have total about 200 gallons rain catchment. Now, my bill is, I use 300 gallons of city water a month. So therefore, I'm charged at the lowest rate. Now, the dial on the meter is read only on the 1,000 dial. So on the fourth month, I get charged because it has turned to 1,000. But in actuality, I've used only 300 gallons. So therefore, I'm charged extra every fourth month. So that's a problem I'd like to address. I think it's a problem.
Okay. You're on.
Okay, I'm on. Thank you, Alan. Alan is also a former Board of Water Supply employee for a long time in our Hydro Geo section, making sure our water resources are safe. I'm going to ask Joe Cooper, our Water Works Controller, to respond to that question because right now, our billing is based on the 1,000 gallons. We round, I think we round down to the nearest 1,000 gallons. But Joe, maybe you can explain what happens with Alan's bill, which is a very commendable Alan. You only use 300 gallons a month. That's really great. But Joe, Water Works Controller.
Is it on? Okay. Yes, you're charging, we read the meters and we charge per 1,000 gallons. And when you look at, I think, the rates that we, that Dave presented to you, it shows something like the first 1,000 gallons is 400, or the first, each 1,000 gallons is, in the lower tier, is like $4.42 per 1,000 gallons. And so it is cumulative over the month. So if you use 300 gallons a month, you won't get charged, you'll just get charged, the billing charge, the base charge, each month until your meter turns over and hits the next 1,000 gallons. So if it's 300 gallons a month, the first three months, you've used 300, 600, 900 gallons, those months, you've just been charged the base charge. And then on the fourth month, it turns over and we read 1,000 gallons, or 1.2,000 gallons, and we charge you that $4.42 for that 1,000 gallons that you've used over the four months.
So would that water bill under that scenario currently, it would be like $9.26. The next month, it would be $9.26. The next month, it would be $9.26. And then the next month...
Next month, it'd be $9.26, and then the next month, it would be $14 and a few cents.
Well, I don't think that's correct. But I'm still using, I'm still using 300 gallons, and you do have 100 dial and a 10 dial, but you're only reading the 1,000 dial.
Maybe what you could do is, I know that folks from Customer Care are here, and maybe right after the meeting, you could spend a few minutes with them and with Joe, and go through the details of your water bill and make sure that we get that question answered more specifically. That be all right?
I know, I know your answer is going to be, it's cumulative. On the fourth month, it's 1,000. I know that.
That's correct.
It's a fact. But way back then, on 30 years, the border water supply used to read the 100 dial and the 10 dial. So that is a more accurate representation.
Yes, I, and really, I think what you're asking is, if we were reading per 100 gallons, then we would bill you 42 cents, or 44 cents, like 100 gallons, and you would like that approach better?
No, I would like it to be, I like to have more accuracy, because I'm not the only one that uses less water than they should be charged, you know? There are others like me who are very strong on conservation, and I try very hard. So that, that every month, I'm charged an extra $5, or $6, is it? So that's $12 a year.
So, Alan, Joe, if I could interrupt. Alan, I'd be glad to follow up with you on this. If you can, let me know also when it was, and what you're saying is, when we move from like billing on the 100 gallon basis, or reading on 100 gallon or 10 gallon basis, to reading on a 1,000 gallon basis.
I think that's more accurate, right?
Yeah.
But my actual usage is 300 gallons.
Right. But you don't get billed until it turns the dial on the 1,000, on the 1,000 digit on the water meter. Yeah. Thank you, Alan.
It becomes 3, 6, 9, then 1.2.
Right.
And then I'm charged extra.
We should sit down and follow up and look specifically at your bill, and also do a little bit more research into what you're bringing up. Thank you. Thanks, Alan.
Okay, who else has a question? Yeah, we'll get a microphone over to you.
My statement is more on the side of conservative, being conservative on drinking water. Let me give you my problem. Last June, about the middle of last June, the border water supply did something, I cannot find out what, but our pressure increased. And, you know, it blew out the ice trays, filters to make ice in the refrigerator, and I've been calling since the middle of last June to find out why they've been wasting water by opening a fire hydrant, the middle of June last year, to lower the pressure at my house and others in the neighborhood. And every time we call to find out if something is being done, all we get is, if we close that fire hydrant, we're going to blow the pipes in your house. What did, see, I can't get answer to this. What did the border water supply do at Ahuimano Reservoir to increase the pressure? I also realize that the pressure at the top of my street is not as high as where I live, down the bottom of the street. I would like to know, I would like an engineer to call me and tell me what pressure I should be getting before the regulator. I'm getting 150 pounds right now of pressure per square inch. That's with the fire hydrant open. What is it going to be when the fire hydrant closes? Also, after my regulator, I am presently getting 110 pounds to my house. This is why my shower is leaking out of the house, my bathtub is leaking out of the house, everything's leaking. So I bought a new regulator, which I'm going to install tomorrow. But I will not adjust that regulator until somebody from the border water supply tells me how much pressure the border water supply should be supplying me before the regulator, and I know what I should adjust it to. I should adjust it to 75 pounds after the regulator, if I don't want to keep blowing stuff up in my house. All night long, my shut-off valve, which I have replaced five times already in the tank of the toilet, I did the ink test, it's not leaking. It'll blast about, maybe every hour, it'll blast for about five seconds and shut off. And this is, this is happening at both toilets, even though I replaced the shut-off valve in the tank. So please, get me an engineer to call me, give me better answers than that fire hydrant is open since the middle of last June, because they're going to blow out my pipes. I want, I want specific numbers, what the pressure should be, and what is the border water supply doing so that eventually they can stop wasting fresh water.
Thank you, sir, for your situation. And I do have, actually, engineers here tonight that can help you with that. If I could get your address and location, I have hydraulic engineers working for Water Resources for Barry. I also have the head of our Water System Operations Division, Mr. Kevin Ihu here, right there, Kevin? Kevin's an engineer also. I have the head of my Field Operations Division tonight, who handles the pipes in the system and operates the fire hydrants, Mr. Mike Fukey there, another engineer, sir.
But I've been there for 40 years already, and I never had this problem.
Yeah, let us look into that with you.
The high concentration of, I forgot, I forgot the name of the chemical that you add to...
Is it chlorine? Chlorine?
Yes, the chlorine. The chlorine at my faucets at midnight, and to 2 o'clock in the morning, is horrendous. You can smell it before you even taste it.
So, sir, I also have the head of our Water Quality Division here, Mr. Erwin Koata. He's right there, and he can have a chemist actually go out and draw a water sample and measure the chlorine level in your home. So it sounds like it's going to be kind of a multiple divisions looking into your problems, sir. And I'm sure, maybe your neighbors might be experiencing similar situations there, so my apologies again, sir, for that situation. So please leave your name, maybe with Barry here, from our Water Resources Division, your name, phone number, and address, and we'll look specifically, and we can calculate based on engineering calculations and hydraulics, what we call the static pressure is at your location. Also, we'll have to estimate your ground elevation to determine what your static pressure that you're going to see at your home. So my apologies for the situation, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight and bringing it up. Other questions? Yes?
I understand, like you said, you guys are separated from the city, you guys have your own, like you don't get any money from the city to do any of the infrastructure. Why is that, first of all, and is there a way, is there a reason, first of all, and why not?
So the, the way the state law is set up that created the Boards of Water Supply, actually, it goes back to 1929, when the Board of Water Supply was created, and it was by the territorial legislature. So they wanted to make the board focus on the water supply for our community. Back in 1929, believe it or not, there was concerns about Honolulu running out of water because of uncontrolled well drilling in the community. People found out there's artesian water, you just drill a well and the water just flows out of the, out of the ground. So that was uncontrolled, and there was a lot of politics at the time with the predecessors, you know, to the city government back in 1929. So the territorial legislature felt, water being so important to our community, make the Board of Water Supply semi-autonomous, on its own, part of city government, but on its own, under a water board, seven members on that water board, that are not elected to office, to be able to do long-term planning, raise water rates when necessary. So that's, along with that governance model, came the idea that the board should be, the water system should be self-sufficient financially, to depend on its rates and charges, and not get any money from the city or the state through tax revenue. Because when that happens, then that allows those elected officials that have control over that money to control how much they provide to the Board of Water Supply. So, sir, good point. What we want to do with these water rates, we want to try to, over time, just incrementally, smaller incremental increases each year, and keep on investing more heavily into the infrastructure. Pipes being one example, going up to 21 miles a year being replaced in our system, and try to sustain that. The worst situation would come if we didn't increase water rates for a long time, and we had to do a catch-up, because the infrastructure issues don't go away. They exist, and a lot of our infrastructure is underground, you cannot even see it, but the pipes are getting older, breaking down, and they manifest itself through main breaks in our system. So, good question. So, yes, we have to be, we have to try to reduce the political influence by having our own board and making sure that we can invest adequately in the water system, but it does create a burden on our ratepayers, our water customers. One of the things we're looking at is looking for other sources of revenue. We attempted a few years ago to actually redevelop some of our property at Beritania. If you go to our Beritania office, you'll see an open parking lot there, pretty large open parking lot, to look at a public-private partnership to develop some, have a developer come in, develop on that property, and provide us lease revenue to help offset, so looking for alternative supply, sources of funding, other than ratepayers. The other thing that we did this past session with the state government, we went to the state government for authorization by the state legislature to issue special-purpose revenue bonds on our behalf to help improve our dams in Nualua. That state has access to cheaper money to borrow. We would be responsible to pay for the debt service. What we want to do in the future is also go to the state legislature every year and request CIP funds from them. You know, we're doing a lot to support farmers by giving them a very discounted water rate, because there's not an island-wide irrigation system to support farmers. They have to take it from BWS to farm in different locations. So can they provide us CIP funds that we're not obligated to repay, but the state takes on that obligation, but maybe a few million each year, if we can achieve that. Every dollar we can get from the state is less dollars we need from our ratepayers from us, from you, sir.
All right.
So those are some strategies, sir. Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, we'll get you a microphone.
I wanted to know how you are preparing for issues of climate change and how it will affect our island water supply?
Thank you, Mahalani. Good question. It's on everybody's mind, especially here in Hawaii. I'm going to ask, actually Barry's a little busy right now, but I'll try to explain. What we're currently doing right now is an assessment of the vulnerability of our water utility to the effects of climate change, and looking forward, I think, to the 2,100 timeframe, quite far ahead in time. What we're looking to assess there is impacts, say, from sea level rise, but also changes to rainfall, changes in the intensity of storms on the island. This research project that we're currently underway with is half-funded by the Water Research Foundation, a national research organization in the water industry. The other half is from BWS. So when we have those results, we'd be glad to come back to the community and share that. Some of the initial concerns are in the coastal areas. With sea level rise, and they talked about 3.3 feet, and now they're talking about by the end of, by 2,100, it might be over six feet. What's going to happen is our coastal infrastructure, our pipelines, which is already buried underground, is going to start to be inundated on a permanent basis in saltwater, basically, in the coastal areas. So what will be the effects to that pipe, those pipes? Will we have to replace them more frequently because corrosion issues for the metallic pipe? And then how do we fix water main breaks when it's constantly under the ocean water? And how do we de-water to fix the water main breaks? Those are going to be some of the challenges. The other thing that has happened, and actually Barry is available now, so I'm going to turn over, sorry, Mahalani, but Barry is the one on the project too. So Barry, maybe you can explain about the vulnerability study on climate change. Thank you.
Yeah, so we were, of course, concerned, as Ernie was saying, that sea level rise and also droughts may have on our water supply, our yields, as well as our coastal infrastructure. So we've, through Ernie's leadership, we engaged the Water Research Foundation, which is a national water foundation. We are members, and we're doing a joint study on the vulnerability of our water system from two aspects. One is coastal, and one is rainfall impacts to the aquifer. So we are about three-fourths of the way through that study. What we found was, so let me talk about, let me talk about aquifer yields and supply. The University of Hawaii has did some climate modeling for us, some rainfall forecast to 2,100, and they have found that in their statistical downscaling model, they found that the leeward side of the island will get less rainfall by as much as 70%, 65 to 70%. So Waianae is going to get a lot drier in that scenario, as well as most of the island, but really, leeward sides will get drier. In their other model, they're saying that some places will get wetter. Windward and upper Honolulu will get wetter, and leeward wouldn't be as dry. But taking the most conservative model, what would we do if that was the case? If rainfall decreases by that much, we expect the yields to drop, the sustainable yields. So each aquifer has a, it's filled with rain, rainfall, and recharge, and you can pump a portion of that out and maintain the aquifer health to, basically forever, if that rainfall is constant. If it drops, then the yield will drop. So it could drop the yields, of the sustainable yields in the aquifers by as much as 34%, 34%. If that is the case, we will have to make some drastic adaptation measures to ensure that there's enough supply. So the study is identifying what those are. Certainly advanced conservation, more recycled water, more storm water capture, like our Nualua project, we're capturing storm water and trying to recharge the aquifer. We would have to advance more of our watershed management projects to ensure that the forests are much more healthier, to be a better sponge to capture that less rainfall. to be a better sponge to capture that less rainfall. Even what they're doing on the mainland, they're actually doing indirect potable reuse. So what that is, is they take wastewater and they double treat it and they disinfect it and they put it into, into the ground and then they pump it up for drinking. So that's what they're doing in Southern California and Arizona and Texas and Florida. The technology is there. That is a bleak future, but it is something that we need to fold into our plan. And what we'll do is we'll continue to monitor what happens in the future to determine what atmospheric situation that may come up and then we'll adjust that way. So really, we need to pump more water into Waianae.
Mahelani? Just turn on your mic.
Okay, sorry, follow-up. Two things, for the 70% drop in available water in the leeward side, rather than just monitoring, couldn't you begin a repopulation with trees and recycled water for irrigation in the leeward side so that Waianae coast doesn't have to get to that point, that'd be one. My second question is, isn't it, I thought I heard somewhere that the saline, the level below the aquifers is salty water. And my understanding is with the melting of the icebergs, that the ocean levels will rise and therefore the freshwater aquifers will also rise and therefore be more salty at the bottom, smaller aquifers. Is that correct?
Yeah, okay, so first, your first question, that's why we're doing more watershed projects. But Waianae, especially focusing on Makaha and Waianae, and Ernie had given us the direction to really start focusing on those two watersheds because those are the basic, those two aquifers provide about 40% of Waianae's water. Recycled water in Waianae is a little too salty. The collection system has seawater intrusion. With sea level rise, we expect more salt to get into the collection system. And so it'll be, right now it's too salty to use for crops. So we would have to desalinate that and that would be more expensive. So it's advanced conservation watersheds and we need to transport more water in. That's the cheapest alternatives right now. When sea level rises, so you know, the freshwater by density sits on top of the lava rock by density, 40 to 1 ratio, sits over saltwater because of the density difference. As sea level rises, if sea level rises three feet, the aquifer will rise three feet. It will not affect our wells. It only when it starts rising to the bottom of the well and then it brings up the transition zone, then we may pick up saltier water. But we're tens of feet, 100 feet above the transition zone, depending on where the well is. For those atolls in South Pacific, when the sea level rises, it goes over the land and then it contaminates the freshwater aquifer. We won't see that here because of the caprock that is at least 35 feet or even more above mean sea level. So the sea level's got to rise further and go inland and then, and then it could contaminate a freshwater aquifer and that wouldn't happen because it's not going to rise that much. But yeah, that is an issue. So supply is one. As Ernie was talking about, now we have part of the, so you guys voted in and created the Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. It's headed by a fellow named Josh Stanbrow, who was with Hawaii Community Foundation and led the Hawaii Freshwater Blueprint, Hawaii Freshwater Council, which Ernie and I are council members. He is leading the city's effort to try to deal with sea level rise. So we created a climate change commission headed by McKenna Kaufman and chair, vice-chair is Mr. Sea Level Rise, Chip Fletcher. They're both renowned researchers at UH. So they are, and we created a city resilience team to try to deal with sea level rise and what we're going to do. So sea level rise is a hard enough to crack. As Ernie was saying, we had three main breaks where we had to wait for low tide to fix the mains because we didn't want to pump too much water out on the road and that's going to get worse. So we're trying to identify what streets or what areas that would be most impacted by sea level rise. We're seeing it now. Last year, we had the king tides around May, June, July, and that was exceptionally high tides. And they did, we have pictures of Alawai flowing into the Alawai Boulevard and into the golf course and around Waikiki, around Lures and Kalia. Mapuna Puna is a famous one, the industrial area that the water is about this deep at high tide. You're going to see more of that. It's called nuisance flooding. We're trying to identify what areas would be the highest priority. And so when you start talking about growth and transit-oriented development, the city is also looking at Iwale because Iwale is a low-lying area that will be flooded in the future. And so what can the city do? We need to raise streets. Miami raised streets 3.7 feet. Looks like our target for Hawaii is going to be 3.2 feet. The state also has a climate change commission and they're working, there was bills at the legislature to start to fold in the findings of the state climate change and plan, fold that into the day-to-day planning and the CIP. So we're working towards that. It's a huge effort because it takes a lot of our, a lot of the city and state agencies. Private properties need to be lifted as well. So where are we going to focus our efforts? And we're talking about drainage. So if it's flooding during high tide when it's a sunny day, if you get a 10-year flood, you know, it's going to flood even more. And that's the issue is that how do you drain these areas at high tide if you get just a 10 or 20-year flood? Not, you know, not to say, I mean, what if you, a regulatory flood elevation is a 100-year flood. So this place is like Dillingham now that flood now with a 10, 20-year flood. And now you add three feet of sea level rise on top of that, you know, it's going to be inaccessible. Properties will be damaged. So what is the city and the state doing about it? And so that's, that's kind of consuming some of my day on how to actually do that. But we are, and I think through Ernie's leadership, are one of the city agencies that is trying to do more, trying to engage UH and engage the professional community to and collaborate with the other agencies on what we're going to do. It's just a hard challenge, but it needs to happen.
So we found Barry's passion on climate change and sea level rise. And I want to bring us back to our discussion on water rates. So see if you have any other questions on water rates or anything else in the presentation that you saw tonight. Yeah?
Can you hear me? Before we get back to water rates, you know, I think it's really important to acknowledge that, you know, 30, a little over 30 years ago, there was no state commission on water resource management and no state water code. The water code came in with the Constitutional Convention. And so I wonder, Ernie, if you might address the interface between county-level Board of Water Supply, both here on Oahu, but other counties as well, and the state commission on water resource management, especially with respect to the fact that the Board of Water Supply is managing what it can manage. But there are many other straws in the cup, private as well. And so, you know, maybe you could address that interface because there's such a huge need, obviously, for everybody to be on the same page, whether it's chemical inputs or withdrawals of water and how those relate to each other. Thanks.
Thank you, John. And thank you for your service on our Stakeholder Advisor Group for the last three years. Good question. In my past life, I served for a brief time as a deputy of the State Water Commission. I also served as a water manager on the island of Kauai. Small, smaller water utility there, but, and then at the Board of Water Supply. So what we have in the state of Hawaii, I think we have some of the major elements we need. The water code passed by the 78 ConCon provides the state overall authority. It also designates that water resources in the state of Hawaii, especially the freshwater resources, are not owned by private individuals, but they are a public trust resource for the people of Hawaii. So under the Water Commission, they control, they monitor the condition of the water resources, both surface water and groundwater across the state. And when they find that the resource is being threatened by overuse, whether or not actual overuse or planned overuse, they can take steps to actually take over and regulate the resources in that region, groundwater or surface water. One of the first areas that they designated as a groundwater, what they call groundwater management area, was almost the whole island of Oahu, except along the Waianae coast, it's the last remaining area. So right now, users like the Board of Water Supply, and we're the biggest on Oahu. The next is probably the military, the Navy and the Army. We have to get a permit from them to tell us how much we can pump each day on a sustainable basis over the long term from the different aquifers on this island. And it's regulated by the Water Commission. Unfortunately, right now, there's a challenge because the commission's focus is mainly on quantity and chlorides or the saltiness of the water, are their primary drivers. The water quality issues, contamination of the resource is really split between them and the State Department of Health. So it's a little what we call bifurcated. So that's kind of the regulatory picture right now. Most, not all of the state is regulated by the Water Commission, but they are monitoring usage across the state. And for the island of Maui right now, the issues of surface water usage, especially because the plantation, when it was still, HCS was still in operation, it was taking a lot of water, surface water being diverted from East Maui to irrigate central Maui, the sugar. So the commission is active in different areas of the island. On Oahu, they're the most active for groundwater. And that's, you know, we look at it as an important partnership with them because we're both looking out for the interests of the sustainability and health of the resource and we don't want to overuse the resource. But right now, the challenges of the Water Commission, and again, I mentioned that we have all the major pieces kind of in place, but we don't have enough resources allocated to some of these pieces. For example, the Water Commission, their mission is so broad. They, you know, water resources across the whole state of Hawaii. That's their mission. But they don't have the staffing and resources for research and data collection that they need to actually get a good, better understanding of the condition of the resources. So I've advocated at times, I've also made the statement that I think the water code is broken because unless you're going to give them enough resources, they can't implement the code as it's written. It's a great code, but it is a challenge of not enough resources to carry out their mission. For our long-term health, these pieces are going to be very important as we start to see the effects of climate change. So I would advocate that. We need, we have the pieces. We need to support it better and increase the collaboration and also take away the barriers of siloed thinking. I am sorry, Board of Water Supply, with Barry and the other team here, we try to look broadly. Eight watershed management plans for each of the areas of the island by, mainly driven by council districts, I think. That looks at all water use, not only for Board of Water Supply. We're focused on drinking water, but it looks at all water use, including agricultural use, environmental needs, native Hawaiian uses. So we take a very broad holistic approach and we try to do grassroots planning with the community in these areas. And Barry has developed, how many now, Barry? Five of the eight?
Four adopted, currently working on four, the other four.
So four adopted, actually by the city council as ordinance and four more to go. And Barry tells me that's when he's going to retire after he completes the fourth.
We're trying to slow him down on that process.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we need Barry around and the rest of the team. So the challenge though is the thinking among other agencies is still somewhat siloed. And we need to kind of break down those silos and start to plan together more closely. The other issue of climate change, that is a multi-agency, private and public sector issue. But right now, we're, there's a lack of this collaboration and breaking down the silos and just looking at the issue and the challenges to face all of our community. It is not trying to protect your area of turf or just say, I'm only looking with blinders in this section of the issue. But we need to look at it broadly and see how we can work together for the good of our community because we live on an island.
So just, so rate changes-
Sorry, you got me going.
But no, I'm glad. So the rate changes that are being suggested are in so many ways a huge investment in an organization that's really holding up the discussion to the level that it should be at. Yes, there should be far more collaboration, but without the Board of Water Supply and all of its, the work that it's doing, we wouldn't be addressing these. So I'm just, it's a pitch for-
Thank you, John.
The rates changes will help to support, you know, safety precautionary bits over a long ways down the road.
And you can see that for the first time, we're now looking at trying to focus more funding resources toward water conservation and toward care of our watersheds, our sponge Maoka to capture the rain that falls on the mountains. So thank you, John. Aloha.
Okay. Raise your hand if you have an additional question. Okay, I believe for, then for public testimony, I believe we have one speaker, Ted Konimori. Okay, and anyone else for public testimony. Okay, so we'll bring the microphone back up and then if I could ask you to keep your comments to three minutes and welcome you on up.
Hi, my name is Ted Konimori. I didn't intend to see anything formal when I got here. First of all, I want to commend the Board of Water for all the clean, good, terrific drinking water that we've been having over the years. Yeah, I know that it's sometimes a thankless job. I also want to thank you for the information. That's a lot of information that you gave tonight. And to me, some of it went in one ear and came out the other ear because I see it as a bill. And what I want to say is that just listening to this, I can understand that there is a need to go ahead and fix whatever needs to be fixed. But in 2006, I was at City Hall, listening to the Board of Water ask for increases in rates for the next five years, all under the auspices of, oh, we have to play catch-up. That's the bottom line. And then after five years, Board of Water came back and asked for another five years. And I remember Romy Coacholo saying, oh, you mean the five, first five years is operating? So that's gone and we'll go back to the old rates and then you're going to ask for another five-year rate increase? And you said, no, 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 no. We're going to keep the rates after the five years and then we're going to increase it another five years. And that went on and on and on until today. I just want to give you, you know, my perspective as an end user. I've lived in Kanioe for 47 years, same place. And I've seen my water bill or water-sour bill triple and almost quadruple. And what you're doing is you're asking for another rate increase for another four years or five years. This past Sunday, the newspaper- This past Sunday, the newspaper, a little, it says, "The base cost of water for the average single-family household customer is proposed to rise by 14.3% over four years, starting in 2019." Well, as a retiree on a fixed income, every increase in my monthly bill, no matter how small or how big, is important to me. Just wanted to say that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anyone else wanting to give public testimony? Let us know your name, and I'll ask you to limit your comments to three minutes.
Did you say that to him?
I believe I did, sir, thank you.
Nathan Cow, I work for Board of Water. I am a meter reader, and all these guys, they talk about, oh, you know, we have sewage bill. All these guys know. They come and tell us. I'm tired of listening to that. Why don't you do something about it? Because all your, all your employees got to put up with that garbage. You guys don't answer the phone, you don't, you don't talk to the customer. But what I'm saying is, I don't know if these figures are right. They might be, they might not be. I don't trust who's running. Why? Because we've been lied to so many times. And I'm not talking about all supervisors, or, I'm just talking about certain ones. Because they're the ones that lie to us up to our face. I've had customers come and tell me, you know, I've called Water Supply, and I want them to fix this leak, and they don't fix the leak. The customer actually went out and fixed it themselves, because it's coming in the line, coming onto their property, and it's making mud of the dirt in front of their house. They had a little fruit stand, and the mud was going all over the place. I turned it in four times in a row, and nothing was done. So if you, if you telling me that we're hunky-dory and all that garbage, it actually depends on the workers. And that's why I'm upset, that's why I'm here, because they treat the workers like [BLEEP]. Excuse the word, but that's the word. They come down, they give us, I'm a meter reader, they give us five-year-old cars, and the car starts breaking down almost immediately. Why? Well, it's not us. You get a five-year-old car, it starts breaking down, five to seven years old. So we want good equipment too. We don't even have enough computers for every worker we have. And they're contract workers, and they can threaten them any way they want, because if you're not a full-time worker under civil service, you have no protections. So if they tell you, you go out there and you drive slower than the speed limit, and you get the ticket, you got to pay the ticket. So this is all fine and dandy, but you know what? How does it affect us? We're the guys that make it work. And I don't hear you guys talking about us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Okay, then I want to wrap up our meeting tonight. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out, spend time, learn about what's being proposed with water rates. There's plenty of food left in the back, please help yourselves, grab a container, take some home. And again, there's additional ways to provide public input through the website, mail, email, phone calls, look forward to that. And again, thank you for spending the time tonight to be here and take an interest. Drive safely.